Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, September the 4th, 2025. The time is now 7:00 PM, so we will call this a regularly scheduled council meeting to order. Our invocation this evening is going to be led by Dixie Roberts, our American pledge by Councilman Scott Salter, and our Texas pledge by none other than Councilman Richard Garavay. Please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for this day, for this is the day that you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. I just pray that you would preside with us this evening as we conduct business to give you glory tonight. We just ask that you be with us through everything, and we give you all the honor, glory, and praise. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, we've got one public comment. Teresa Beasley, would you like to come forward, please?
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you all?
Good, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm approaching City Council for review and addressing commercial motor vehicles that are parking and repairing these vehicles on the city streets. Around July 1st, a resident of Johnson Apartments located on Hood Street parked a commercial motor vehicle with a 40-foot tractor-trailer on Hood Street over the four-day weekend. Over the next several weekends, the resident continued to park either with or without the tractor-trailer. On July 31st, the commercial motor vehicle with a tractor-trailer parked besides our driveway, blocking our sight of uncoming traffic, making it unsafe to enter the roadway. Calls and texts were made to the apartment manager with no action taken to move the vehicle. We reached out to Megan DeKaiser, excuse me, and the Alvin Police Department. By August 7th, the motor vehicle was nonoperational. The resident was granted time to repair the vehicle on the city streets. Nine days later, the vehicle was moved. On August 30th, the commercial motor vehicle with the tractor-trailer again parked overnight on the street. The police were called, and six hours later, the vehicle was moved, but the cab returned. Texts were made to and sent to the apartment manager with no response, and to Ms. DeKaiser. The motor vehicle was again nonoperational, and again, the resident was granted time to repair this vehicle on the street. Four days later, it was moved. Working with Ms. DeKaiser, City Ordinance language does not address commercial motor vehicle parking and repairing on the city streets. City Ordinance Number 24-44 Truck Routes state, "Commercial motor vehicles shall confine their travel within the city to the following streets listed A through N." While the commercial motor vehicle is not authorized to travel on Hood Street, why is it allowed to park overnight for several days and be repaired on the street? I am asking review of this ordinance and all other ordinance addressing parking on the city streets. Additionally, this commercial motor vehicle is parked in the hike and bike trail lanes. This area has no sidewalks, forcing citizens to travel in the street because of the blockage. I understand there is no ordinance addressing the parking of the hike and bike trails, and request this also to be reviewed and addressed. At least start with commercial motor vehicles. I have several photos to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to see them?
If you want to pass them around or on your phone?
They're on my phone.
Can you email them to the City Secretaries?
She can forward them to us?
Sure.
Thank you.
That'd be perfect. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, thank you for bringing that to attention. Thank you, thank you. Next, we will receive a public hearing to receive comment on the proposed tax rate of .0700635 cents per $100 of valuation for the fiscal year 2526, which is the 25 tax year, which is a no new revenue tax rate for the city of Alvin. With the time being 7:07 PM, we will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak regarding the proposed tax rate, now is the time to do so. Again, this public hearing is to receive comment on the proposed tax rate of .700635 cents per $100 of valuation for the fiscal year 2025-26, which is the no new revenue tax rate for the city of Alvin. If you would like to speak on the proposed tax rate, please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing at 7:07 PM.
Commissioner, do you want me to speak?
Oh, no, sir.
Commissioner?
Just making sure.
He'll get his turn. Thank you, sir. Couldn't have done it without you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Councilman Garavay, anything you'd like to remove?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
No, sir. No, sir.
We'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Items approved on the consent agenda are the August 21st, 2025 City Council Meeting minutes. Item B, a final plat of Preservation Creek Phase II Section 6, being a planned unit development of 11.19 acres situated in the WDC Hall survey. Item C, a final plat of Preservation Creek Phase III Section 7, being a planned unit development of 23.50 acres situated in the WCDC Hall survey. Item D, consider a final plat of Preservation Creek Phase III Section 8, being a planned unit development of 19.70 acres situated in the WDC Hall survey. Item E, a final plat of Preservation Creek Phase III Section 9, being a planned unit development of 16.04 acres situated in the WDC Hall survey. Item F, consider a final plat of Preservation Creek Phase III Section 10, being a planned unit development of 16.53 acres situated in the WDC Hall survey. Item G, a final plat of Preservation Creek Phase III, Pinnacle Parkway Segment 1, being a planned unit development of 3.254 acres situated in the WDC Hall survey. Item H, a master preliminary plat of Fox Meadow Crossing, being a replat of 92.351 acres of land, being out of a called 92.388 acre tract as described by deed recorded under BCCF number 2023004007, Borzoria County, Texas. Mayor?
All right, thank you, Dixie. Moving on to other business. Item A, consider professional services agreement with AGCM to provide design management support services related to the City Hall project, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement upon legal review.
Yes, Mayor, Council.
So we are asking Council to authorize this professional services agreement with AGCM to provide design management services. The scope of their services will include reviewing of design documents, also establishing a budget that tracks hard and soft costs, as well as coordinating all of the communication between staff, the architect, and construction management at risk. As stated in your agenda commentary, we noted that during the construction of the fire and EMS station, AGCM was our project manager for that as well, and they did a good job. And so, staff recommends approval of this agreement. We have Mr. Matt Graves, who's the senior project manager for AGCM. He's present tonight should you have any specific questions. With that being said, staff recommends approval of this agreement.
Thank you. Does the Council have any questions?
Mr. Graves, do we get a discount?
Do I coupon?
I do. I do. So yellow coupon from HEB.
Any real questions?
No.
Get a real question to get a discount. Try to save tax dollars here, sir.
Fair enough. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve a professional service agreement with AGCM Inc. to provide design management support services related to the City Hall project, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement upon legal review.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item B, consider a variance request from the homeowner at 600 Old Galveston Road to encroach 14 feet into the 25-foot street-side building setback for the construction of a garage with a carport.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
What you have before you is a variance request submitted by the homeowner to construct a garage with a carport on their property. It's located at 600 Old Galveston Road, where they are constructing the garage, wanting to construct the garage, and the carport is on Grant Lane. To achieve this, they would need to encroach 14 feet into the 25-foot street-side building setback along Grant Lane. The carport, as proposed, will be approximately 31 feet, 6 inches from the nearest edge of the Grant Lane pavement. Planning Commission approved this request on August 19th at their planning commission meeting. Any questions? Oh, sorry. We have the homeowner, John Maddox, here. If you guys have any questions, guys or gals have any questions for...
Very good. Thank you. Any questions, comments, and then we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve the variance request for the homeowner at 600 Old Galveston Road to encroach 14 feet into the 25-foot street-side building setback for the construction of a garage with carport.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item C, consider Resolution 25R21 expressing support for the Phase II Lower Clear Creek and Dixon Bayou Watershed 203 feasibility study to culminate with the creation of a list of projects and funding options to address flooding and its devastating impacts, and setting forth other provisions related thereto. Commissioner?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I walked in, saw a bunch of people taking notes, and didn't realize there was, I guess, a class that's learning from y'all tonight. So make sure you're on your best behavior.
I won't mess that up.
I won't mess it up.
Things different. You already kind of remember that.
I'm in your world, so I'll follow all your rules. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about Phase II of the Lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bayou Study. Phase I began after Hurricane Harvey 2019, was completed in 2022. It was adopted as a priority by Congress in 2022, but it's sat there unfunded. So we've decided locally to just go ahead and fund it ourselves and get it moving again, because there's a lot of the in the tunnel. We have some support from some of our representatives in Congress, as well as at the state level, to provide funding for the actual construction, but they've asked us to develop the projects so that they can, you know, have a good argument to take to their peers. So this will be a 24 to 36-month-long process, beginning now, or maybe a few weeks ago. 19 cities and four counties are included in the study area. The study itself costs $3 million. There's anticipated costs for environmental, I guess, research for... There's anticipated costs for environmental, um, I guess, research for two million dollars. Uh, Leake City, Galveston County, Friendswood, and Harris County Flood Control District have kind of made a preliminary agreement to take care of the funding as necessary. We're asking all the cities within to pass a resolution to support, which is what's on your agenda tonight. Uh, and then, you know, as we go down the road, we might ask for, um, some nominal amount of funding just to give y'all some ownership of the project. Uh, like I said in my, I think, communication with the mayor, the funding is not the important piece. It's really the coordination and the support to show the federal and state government that this is important to us. Uh, we're tired of flooding. We are committing a lot of dollars to improving our stormwater systems within the city limits. We're getting water out to the main channels, but the main channels are overfilling their banks during flood events. Uh, and that's something that's going to take a big regional project. So, um, every time, I don't have to, I don't have to preach it to you, but I will anyways. Every time we do a project, we're improving, you know, the flood risk for our communities by a matter of inches, which is, which is a big deal. Uh, but when you flood by multiple feet, inches is not going to cut it. Uh, but if, in order to get multiple feet of relief, it takes hundreds of millions, if not, you know, a billion dollars. So, uh, we're working together on this. I'd appreciate y'all's support on it, and I'm also happy to answer any questions you have about, uh, Phase Two of the study.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
I'm excited about it.
That's a great project.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll, uh, I think most of y'all have my information. If you ever need anything, call me or text me, I'll be happy to, to let you know where we're at. As the project moves forward, there won't be updates every day, uh, but I'll come back and speak to y'all as often as necessary to make sure that, uh, everyone's kind of on the same page.
Very good.
Thank you.
Sounds great, thank you.
Mayor, move to approve Resolution twenty-five, twenty-five R. Twenty-one expressing support for the Phase Two Lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bayou Watershed two oh three feasibility study to culminate with the creation of a list of projects and funding options to address flooding and its devastating impacts and setting forth other provisions related thereto.
Second.
Thank you, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Fantastic, thank you. Uh, next, we have, um, item D, consider ordinance twenty-five P. Amending Chapter Twenty-One, subdivisions and property development of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alvin, Texas for the purpose of amending Article Seven Parkland Dedication and Development Fee and amending Chapter Twenty-Eight Comprehensive Fee Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alvin, Texas for the purpose of amending Section Twenty-eight Two in general, parkland dedication, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and setting forth other provisions related thereto.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, so we had talked about this at a July meeting, and, uh, not to go over the last year or better part of a year, we put for, the Park Board has discussed this, revising this ordinance, and from the July meeting to now, um, the board had recommended to put in a provision that basically enacts this ordinance on the eleventh dwelling rather than the first dwelling. And I believe that, that, uh, from the July meeting, that Council wanted something a little more, um, specific as it related to infill or smaller development. And so the board, um, at our meeting, uh, just last month, uh, took that and looked at it, and this is what they're putting forward as a way to, I guess, balance that sense of unfairness. And then at the same time, I had mentioned at the July meeting, uh, the board continues their recommendation to increase the, uh, fee in lieu from current seven hundred to fifteen hundred. Um, and then as well as the two-acre minimum to a five-acre minimum, uh, on a, on a, uh, parkland donation. So, so with that, those are the, the big, big changes, and we'd like to, to your consideration.
Thank you, Dan.
Yes, sir.
I think that pretty well addresses all the concerns, right?
We hope so.
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions? No? Then we'll entertain a motion. Not everybody wants.
Number twenty-five P. Amending Chapter Twenty-One Subdivisions and Property Development of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alvin, Texas for the purpose of amending Article Seven Parkland Dedication and Development Fee and amending Chapter Twenty-Eight Comprehensive Fee Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alvin, Texas for the purpose of amending Section Twenty-eight Two in general, parkland dedication, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and setting forth other provisions related thereto.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, uh, before we go into items E. And F., uh, we're going to adjourn into executive session. Uh, the executive session item that we have directly relates to those two items. So, we're going to jump into executive session, um, for section five five one, point zero seven one two of the local government code, uh, attorney consultation to receive attorney advice in connection with the city's legal rights, duties, privileges, and obligations related to the ongoing negotiations of a collective bargaining agreement. So, with the time being seven twenty P. M., we are going to adjourn into executive session, and we will return.
Back in eight oh five P M. We are back to regular session. There was no action coming out of executive session. Therefore, we will now move to item E. Consider ordinance twenty five W adopting the annual budget for the city of Alvin, Texas for fiscal year two thousand twenty five twenty six. Directing the city secretary to post a copy of the budget on the city of Alvin website and setting forth other provisions related there too.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Welcome back.
Good evening. Thank you.
What we have here in front of you is the standard yearly budget approval for the adopted document. It's always kind of a catch twenty two. We can't give you the full document because the full document requires us to put how you voted from the meeting along with a couple of ordinances in the back. So unless I look into my crystal ball and read every one of y'all's minds, I can't really give you a finished document until you vote. But that's the document we have in front of you. We have posted on our website. It's on our front page and it's also on the finance page. We've been updating it as we go along. We're not updating any of the numbers per se. We're putting a few charts here and there. Adding a couple of funds for some transparency, but everything that you looked at during the budget workshops is the budgeted amounts that we still have in place for the next fiscal year. And that's what we're asking you to approve tonight. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them, along with city manager, Mr. Rowland. If I'm under the bus, you're coming with me.
Anyone have any questions? All right. Well, then we'll entertain a motion.
And because.
I move to approve ordinance twenty five W adopting the annual budget for the city of Alvin, Texas for fiscal year two thousand twenty five through twenty six. Directing the city secretary to post copy of the budget on the city of Alvin's website and setting forth provisions related there too.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Item F. Consider ordinance twenty five X adopting and levying the ad valorem tax rate for the tax year two thousand twenty five fiscal year twenty six, commencing October one, two thousand twenty five and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty six.
Good evening again. Second part of this, and we were able to skip one of the things that we did last year about ratifying because we are choosing to use the no new revenue rate. Since we didn't go above that, we don't have to make that extra step, but we are proposing tonight for the next fiscal year's tax rate to be point seven zero zero six three five per hundred dollars evaluation. In the commentary and you have here in front of you, you can see what we've been doing for the past ten years. As far as the rates, they are trending downwards. We would not like them to trend too far downwards. Don't want to get into too much trouble. But this is where the number that we're starting with tonight and we can start with this motion or we can change it to any value that you would like to see on there. And it does only require a majority. It doesn't require a super majority because it is at the no new revenue rate or less, which you voted on at the last council meeting.
Yes, sir. Any questions? Comments?
I propose that we keep the tax rate the same at six day and a half cents per hundred dollars evaluation. At the end of the day, I just think instead of increasing taxes to raise money, we should instead try to cut spending. That's what I think we should do. And I don't think that the residents want a tax increase. I realize it's a no new revenue rate and it's not that much to the taxpayer individually, but I just think that capturing the difference between last year's property tax revenues and this year's shouldn't go into the city budget. It should go back into the taxpayers pocket. So and then along with the fact that, you know, we just approved a new city hall. You know, I voted against it because I knew that we were going to be asked during the same budget season to also increase the tax rate. So if we have to increase the tax rate to pay for a new city hall, then that tells me it's because we can't really afford it. So that's why I voted against it. And so to be consistent with that, I'm also recommending or proposing that we keep the tax rate the same. I don't think the no new revenue rate should be adopted tonight. And I just encourage my fellow council members to do the same.
Yeah, I agree with Councilwoman DeKaiser. Visiting with so many residents, visiting with so many residents during the campaign, it was such an issue of the the tax rate. And I actually compared same size structure, same same business in Alvin versus Manville. And it was eight thousand dollars in city taxes that the particular business would be paying just in city taxes, having their business in one city. It was in that it was eighty five hundred dollar difference in city taxes if they were in Friendswood. So you're asking, you know, when people are concerned that no one wants to do business in Alvin. It's concerning because they sit there and they go, okay, well, medium household value is lower. We're not going to be able to generate the same revenue from the same customers. Why would we choose to to park our business here? Why would we choose to do that if our our taxes are going to continue to go up? And again, I don't even like the term no new revenue. I I understand. I understand what it means, but I think it's a little deceiving to the public. Because they sit there and they go, oh, it's no new revenue, no new revenue. Well, because of evaluations or because of the values. But ultimately, we know, as we've seen for decades, out of nowhere, the state could decide that our taxes or our valuations are substantially higher. And regardless that we didn't raise it or we said we use the no new revenue rate, it's a two percent. It's a two cent tax increase. Regardless of the way we label it. And that's why I'm 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 big time against it.
So I'm on the same page just because we've had homestead caps that haven't been keeping up with values. So even though it is the no new revenue rate, homestead values are coming up for a lot of homeowners just because the homestead caps are not keeping up with the actual values of the home, which is therefore increasing their taxes. So I'm also on the same page.
And I realize that there's lots of planning and things that go into preparing the budget on, you know, our staff's behalf and all those things. And so I asked, you know, what's the consequence going to be if we keep the tax rate the same or if we adopt the no new revenue rate? And as far as I can tell, staff would be able to navigate that without much trouble at all. So, you know, it's not like it's the end of the world, for lack of a better term, if we don't do it. It's just means that we're going to have to tighten our belts. And in this economy, everybody's doing that. Everybody's finding a way to cut expenses. And I think it's entirely appropriate that the city should do the same thing too.
So I have a question for the U three. Every single one of you just voted yes to adopt the annual budget. If you through in three knew you were going to vote against this tax rate, why did you just adopt that budget that's based on that tax rate?
Because city staff told me that it would be feasible to do that with the six day and a half cent tax rate.
That's not what you just approved, though. You voted on a budget that's based on seventy point point seven zero zero six three five. You did not vote on a budget that's based on point six eight five.
I was provided this same budget at the beginning of the of the budget season with all the same numbers in it that was in a deficit by five hundred thousand dollars. We were told, oh, go find money to cut someplace. And then we go do that. And then we come back and what do they tell us? Oh, no, you don't need to do that anymore. We'll just raise the tax rate to find the money. So while I agree with the items that are in the budget, right? And while we went through each and everything and we try to look through what we can cut and all those things, and then we get told, oh, no, you don't really need to cut that. We can do it this way. And so the budget seems to be just fine. And at the sixty eight and a half cents tax rate, I mean, if it seems like it's feasible to the staff that they can do that and make it work, then let's make it work.
And what staff are you talking about?
I'm talking about Unruh, Rowland, and Mr. Chris Thomas. I spoke with them both privately separately and asked them if this doesn't get approved, how big of a deal is it going to be? Because that's a concern of mine. I don't want to make a harder job for them. I don't want to make their jobs harder or anything like that, or put the city in a position where we're not going to be able to pay for things that are essential. And it's my understanding that we would be okay. I mean, they, in my opinion, they have a solid hold on the budget and I trust that. But at the same time, it's up to us to adopt the tax rate. That's one of the main functions of council. And like I said before, in workshops past, you know, we're up here to represent the residents. And at the end of the day, a tax increase is a tax increase, no matter how you word it, just like council member Salter said. So that's why I voted for the budget.
Us voting to approve the budget just means that we agree that it's financially sound. But we don't. We don't. We don't agree with the tax increase. That's and that's why they're two separate items and it's not combined into one. Because ultimately, we're we're agreeing that they're being fiscally responsible with the rate that they're getting, but ultimately, we're not agreeing with the tax increase.
And just for clarity, if you vote, if you keep the tax rate the same, what would happen? We were going through reserves.
So that, and that's the point that I kind of, where my opinion is on this is that in two thousand fifteen, it was point eight three. We've consistently either kept it the same, but really what has happened is since two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, we've consistently lowered taxes, lowered taxes, lowered taxes, lowered taxes. The budget was formulated to go and put a Band-Aid on or get us by on a point seven zero tax rate. That's what it was. In my time being here on council and being here prior to being on council, there is a lot of services that were provided to the residents and businesses of this city that we cannot offer now. We can't even put lights over at National Park on the Christmas, on lighting up, lighting up the tree. There's certain things that we have done. There's many projects that I have proposed to this city council and to the city staff that nothing's been done because we just don't have the money. It didn't fit within our budget. It didn't fit within our budget before, but we consistently cut and cut and cut. And I was never in favor of it because I knew that we were going to be in a position that we are here today, that we have to make a hard decision. Next year, we're going to have an even harder decision because we're labeled as the city of Alvin. We are labeled as a government. And anytime we get a contractor or a business person that wants to come in here and want to do business with a government or with the city of Alvin, they tack on a whole bunch of extra money. I can go to Home Depot and go get something and do a project and put concrete on the ground and build my own sidewalk for twenty-five percent less than what we're actually charged. But because of the fact that we are using public funds and it's public work and we're labeled as a government, we get higher and higher rates. I would love to basically have a whole bunch of projects and a whole bunch of things done. This budget was formulated to basically get us by for one year. That's what it was. Unfortunately, where I stand is I want to see more. We're going to be in the same boat next year making some tough decisions. Do we put in an air conditioning system over at Animal Control? Do we put in fixed lights at a baseball field? Can we do that? The answer is probably not next year. We can barely do it now because I can tell you when the quote comes in, we're going to be like, all right, we brought Peter to pay Paul. That's just my opinion. That's what I've seen.
For a city hall. So that to me, that doesn't drive. We can't issue debt for tens of millions of dollars to purchase a new city hall and to do all these things and then turn around and say, well, we don't have any money to do stuff and everybody's overcharging us because we're a governmental entity. Well, that's the same issue that all local cities and municipalities face. Every single Friendswood, Pearland, anywhere, they all have the same issues that we have to deal with with regard to that. And yet we're the second highest tax rate in all of Brazoria County. It's up to us to change that if that's what we want to do. What do we want to do? That's the question.
I don't have any problem telling a resident that development, that sales tax growth, that business investment into our community has to catch up before they can have a splashback, before they can have an add-on to a building. You know what I mean? Like we have a senior center, we have a rec center, we have these things that other communities don't have, and we also have one of the highest tax rates in the state. And that's why, that's why I don't have a problem waiting on some of these things because ultimately that's just a matter of fiscal responsibility. You don't get to have what Friendswood or what other communities have if you don't have the investment into the community to fund them. So we have to be good stewards and provide avenues for investment into our community, you know? And I know that some of those things will catch up, but ultimately, we can't have it all. We can't have it all. And our median household income says so.
There's a motion on the floor. Just so, just there's a motion to approve a tax rate at zero point six eight five zero.
I'll second that. That's keeping it the same.
Or what? No?
No. The motion is, oh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that was your motion. Yeah, and I'll second the motion.
To propose the, to keep the tax rate the same.
No, because it-
It's not on the agenda because that's not what the agenda says. So I mean, that's why I-
You have to say yes or no on the seventy cents.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yeah, we have to take no action or we have to, you have to say yes or no, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay. Sorry. Sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Touch on, if we go to the sixty, sixty-eight and a half cents, we have to dip into reserves, right? And what does that do to us in the bigger picture?
So don't have a hurricane.
That would simply deplete our fund balance. As we talked about, it would not be hard for us to physically do the budget and physically do that, but we're going to have to make a decision. Do you either want to cut stuff or do you want to dip into the fund balance at that point?
And if we dip into the fund balance, what does that do to our credit rating?
It's not going to affect our credit rating as much because we have a fund balance of around ten million, eleven million dollars. If you're going to drop that by half a million dollars, it's just going to drop it half a percent or four, five percent. So it's not going to affect our credit rating per se, but if we go out for a bond next year for doing water improvements, they may look at that and say, oh, well, you had fifty percent of reserves there. But now since you had to dip into it and take away that five hundred thousand, now you're only at forty-five percent.
So it affects our interest rate?
Maybe that's the difference between double A and double A plus.
Which affects our interest rate on millions of dollars.
Of bonds. And I can't, you know, don't have the crystal ball, can't promise you that's the case. But it could very well be a situation where it comes down to, hey, if you guys would have had that extra half a million dollars, we could have given you that double A plus that you really, really want to lower your credit or to lower your interest rate on that particular loan of twenty-five million dollars from, say, maybe four point five percent to four percent. And half a percent of twenty-five million dollar interest is a lot of money that we'd be saving.
If we have a catastrophic event or an example that we lose this city hall, the building that is almost a hundred years old, it's a non-sprinkled building, we have a catastrophic event, how long, how much of can the city float on that of reserves?
I believe right now it was somewhere between four point seven five and five point one months.
Four to five months.
Plus, we have insurance on the building.
Yeah, we have insurance that like, a little bit, but we get hit with a hurricane and it wipes out half of our buildings or whatever. We're only insured, we're insured, but we're only insured up to a certain amount.
Mayor, we don't have a hundred percent coverage, remember?
And FEMA would take however long to reimburse us, so we can count that.
I understand your points and I apologize if I come back out rude, but like I told Joel Castro, the last time he did this at the eleventh hour, you had many opportunities to say this in the budget workshops. You had many opportunities to explain.
During the budget workshop that I was, that I didn't want to ditch. And I've said that to multiple people on this board multiple times.
During the first and second budget workshops, first they said, we'll do this, and now we're doing this. And it's like, wait, I thought we had a plan to find things to cut in the budget the way that I thought we should. Yeah, let's cut money instead of trying to find where we can grab more and then turn around, oh, no, we're just going to increase the taxes. And it's like, I'd rather try to keep the taxes low and cut because I saw a lot of things that could be cut, you know, from this fund or that fund or whatever the case may be. So, you know, and then I did have a medical emergency at the last budget meeting, so I apologize that I wasn't there. I wanted to be there, you know? So I'm sorry if it's coming off like I'm saying this at the eleventh hour, but I think my reluctance to increase the tax rate was always obvious to my colleagues up here.
We did have several budget workshops. We did look at several opportunities to decrease expenditures. And I think that while we tried that in the grand scheme of things, the things that were identified didn't really make much of a difference. I think we were looking at trying to find some substantial savings and the savings that we were looking at were five thousand dollars and three thousand dollars. And in the grand scheme of things, we couldn't find anything to cut out of the budget. We tried, we had several workshops where we, where we, we all analyzed that. I mean, Chris and Unruh went back and the only reason why the deficit wasn't even more was because there was a terms calculation and it's, and then some insurance savings that came in that saved us. You know, there was, there was, it was a mathematical, you know, which was, you know, innocent oversight, but it was, there was a mathematical error. And by the grace of God, we have a new insurance agent that saved us some substantial money on premiums. Those are the two catalysts that really helped to bridge that gap. But when we were looking at the, at the budget workshops, we were looking at expenditures. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, there was no substantial, I mean, there was really no meat to cut off the bone, was there?
But at the same time, we hadn't voted on purchasing a city hall yet. And if we hadn't done that, then that would have added approximately eight hundred thousand dollars to the budget, according to the numbers that I was provided by our city manager. So, and the numbers that were in the budget. And so to me, that's why I voted no because I said, well, if we vote no to this now, not because we don't need a city hall or that staff doesn't deserve it, but at all. It's because I can see that the numbers aren't working and if we don't purchase this at this time, we can put an extra eight hundred grand into our budget. And so that would cover it. So that's why I voted no. And so I just want to be consistent with how I feel that we shouldn't overspend just because we can. So I don't want to do this to the residents. So again, I move to approve the tax rate as staying the same at sixty-eight and a half cents.
Let the motion be that and then, then you all can just vote no.
That's the motion seconded by Councilmember Salter.
So we're voting on what Megan said?
No.
Somebody needs to make that motion, though. Wait.
So what needs to happen is somebody who is in favor of this motion needs to move to approve this motion. There needs to be a second. It needs to go to a vote and whoever is opposed to the no new revenue rate needs to vote no. Whoever is okay with adopting this rate needs to vote yes.
And a second in the first place, under that.
No one's made the motion yet. No one's made the motion yet.
So if there's a member of council who is wanting to move to adopt the ad valorem tax rate at the no new revenue rate of point seven zero zero six three five, needs to make a motion.
Mayor.
Move to adopt and levy the ad valorem tax rate for tax year two thousand twenty-five fiscal year twenty-six commencing October first, two thousand twenty-five and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six be adopted at a rate of point seven zero zero six three five cents per one hundred dollars evaluation.
Please vote.
Motion does not pass. Councilmember Vaughn, Davis, De Kaiser, and Salter voting no.
So then the rate stays at the sixty-eight and a half cents?
Doesn't that have to be on the agenda, though, for a vote on that or no, that can just be established right now?
Because the agenda item doesn't have a rate stated in the actual agenda item so that you can set your rate. I would suggest you adopt the actual rate of whatever you're wanting, right?
So now, so now Megan can move like she did before?
So I'm just going to insert that amount. Okay. Move to adopt and levy the ad valorem tax rate for tax year two thousand twenty-five commencing October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six to be adopted at a rate of sixty-eight five cents per one hundred dollars evaluation.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Vela and Garavay voting no.
Okay. Thank you. Consider if any requests from individual council members. Councilman Garavay?
It doesn't need to be an action item by us, but I would like to hear a report from the city manager. I know we had a public comment about the vehicle that was parked on the roadway and it was in another district. But within my district, I've had specific problems with vehicles that are parked on public roadways and not on, not on private properties that are being worked on. In particular, we have a business that's along the railroad tracks at between E and a half and Highway six that has vehicles on the backside of the property. And there's now trees growing through those vehicles. I know I brought it up before. And then also we have vehicles that are parked along the railroad tracks at Gordon Street and Old Galveston Road. They're being sold on, I believe, is railroad property. I would love to park my vehicle on the railroad tracks just to get that thing to just be quiet. And then also as well as over in certain areas of town. So I don't know if it's, if it falls within the, it falls in multiple areas. It's the responsibility of the police department, the police chief, code enforcement, as well as the building official because it affects businesses, but I would like to see that something is addressed. We do have several ordinances that are in place that address these individual little items, but I would like to just hear a report that something is getting, getting done for it at the next council meeting. Thank you.
I was just going to say, yeah, maybe a workshop about what Ms. Beasley was talking about. She and I discussed it. I talked about it a little bit with Unruh to kind of see how we can address that. And then the no parking in the hike and bike trail, I think that might be a little bit difficult to implement, but we can see what we can do about that for her. So that's all.
Reports from the city manager.
Yes, Mayor Council. National night out is October seventh. For those interested in hosting an event, please contact Detective Justin Kelly at two eight one five eight five seven one seven five. And lastly, just want to announce that the city of Alvin, state of the city address will be from our mayor dummy scheduled for October twenty-first at eleven thirty a.m. at Heights Baptist Church. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Items of community interest. You have anything? No?
Our department open house is October fourth from ten to two.
Very good. No? Very good. Well, with that, it is eight thirty-two and we are adjourned. Thank you all.